I'd like to call or order the Wyoming Valley West School District work session slash regular October meeting, October eighth at seven oh five. Roll call please.
Mr. Wilson?
Here.
Mr. DeBaskis?
Here.
Mr. Hardwick?
Here.
Mr. Keating?
Excused.
Mr. McGinley?
Present.
Mr. Profetto?
Here.
Mr. Kabuski?
Here.
Mrs. Cassat?
Here.
Mr. Camus?
Here.
A moment of silence followed by the salute to our flag.
I would like to lead the just to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, of the liberty and justice for all.
I would like to announce there was an executive session held prior to this meeting to discuss our professional teachers contract. Student representative Emily Bowler.
Congratulations to high school senior Elijah Sirota on being named a commended student in the two thousand twenty-six National Merit Program. Commended students placed among the top fifty thousand students who entered the two thousand twenty-six competition by taking the two thousand twenty-four preliminary SAT National Merit Scholarship Qualifying Test, or PSAT. Kindergarten Fall Fest was held at State Street Elementary yesterday. Students enjoyed decorating pumpkins, visiting the petting zoo, playing games, dancing, eating popcorn, and posing for a photo. Over twenty members of the high school student council assisted with this event. Ninth grade students will participate in a box out bowling assembly on Wednesday, October fifteenth. The assembly is funded through a grant at the LIU. Thank you to LIU eighteen and Cara Divine for supporting this initiative for WVW high school students. Club day is on Thursday, October sixteenth. KDP will be at the high school on Thursday, October twenty-third for makeup pictures. The PSATs will be given at Wyoming Valley West High School on Tuesday, October twenty-eight. Students in grades ten and eleven who are college bound and plan to take the SAT in the future should register for this important test. The PSAT is the best preparation for the SAT, and juniors who take the test may qualify to enter the National Merit Scholarship Programs. The cost of the test is eighteen dollars, and limited fee waivers are available for qualifying juniors only. Students must have checks made payable to WVW Activity Funds at the time of registration with Mrs. Schweitzer in the guidance office, and the deadline to register will be Wednesday, October fifteenth. On Thursday, October thirtieth, the sophomores will participate in a class ring assembly. Homecoming week is the week of October fourteenth, and the schedule is as follows. Tuesday is Go for the Gold Jersey Day. Wednesday is Golden Duo, twin with a teacher. Thursday is Class Color Wars and Elementary Pep Rally Day. Friday is Spirit Day, the high school pep rally day, and parade. Here are some parade reminders for the seventeenth. Participants should arrive no later than five thirty to the WVW Central Office and wear Spartan attire or gear that represents their organization. Wyoming Avenue will be closed temporarily from Maple Ave to Chester Street with the parade beginning at five forty-five. Arrival at the stadium is approximately six oh five, and the band will perform at six thirty. At six forty-five, introduction of homecoming court and the crowning of Mister and Miss Sparta. Saturday, October eighteenth, is the homecoming semi from five to nine at the high school. This year's theme is Golden Gala. The Spanish club is selling socks and scrunchies through the month of October for Dia de los Mertos, and the class of two thousand twenty-eight is selling Halloween shirts until October twelfth. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Superintendent's comments, Dr. Supan?
Thank you. Good evening, Spartans. As we move into October, I want to take a moment to reflect on what an incredible start we've had to the school year. Our students are engaged and motivated. Our staff continues to go above and beyond, and our families and community partners remain dedicated to supporting our schools in every possible way. The positive energy across the district is truly inspiring. One of the exciting changes this year has been the introduction of our classroom cellphone holders. I'm proud to share that this initiative has been working extremely well. Teachers have reported noticeable increases in student focus and participation, and students themselves have commented on how much easier it is to stay engaged in lessons without the distraction of their phones. Early data and feedback even shows improvements in classroom performance and assessment scores. Proof that when we all commit to creating the best learning environment possible, great things happen. I would like to extend my heartfelt gratitude to the staff and students at the Wyoming Valley West High School for their outstanding leadership and compassion in bringing Josh's suicide awareness bench to our school grounds. This meaningful addition stands as a powerful symbol of hope, support, and unity for our students. Your commitment to promoting mental health awareness and encouraging open, honest conversations about such an important topic is truly commendable. The bench serves as a last ring reminder that no one is ever alone and that help, understanding, and care are always within reach. Thank you for your dedication, empathy, and unwavering commitment to the well-being of our entire school community. At the same time, we must acknowledge the growing concern surrounding the delay in the passage of the state budget. Every day without the finalized budget has a real and lasting impact on our students, staff, and community. It affects the resources we can provide, the programs we can sustain, and the financial stability of our district. I strongly encourage all members of our community to reach out to your local legislators and urge them to come up, come together to pass a fair and timely budget. Our students deserve stability and support, and every day of a delay is a day taken away. Some numbers to share. Last year, from seven one two thousand twenty-four to nine thirty two thousand twenty-four, the district received roughly twelve million dollars of state and federal funding, your basic, special ed, title, property tax, retirement, social security. From this year, from seven one twenty-five to nine thirty twenty-five, the district received one point three million, a difference of over ten point five million less than the prior year. So you can see the financial impact without a budget has on us, which negatively impacts students. Another critical issue tied to the state budget is the urgent need for cyber charter school funding reform. Currently, local tax dollars are funding cyber charter schools, and the cost continues to rise dramatically each year, diverting millions of dollars from our public classrooms. These funds could otherwise be used to directly benefit our students, staff, and programs here in the Wyoming Valley West School District. Meaningful reform is long overdue and ensures that all educational institutions, we need to ensure that all educational institutions are fairly funded and transparent. We need our legislators to take decisive action and make cyber reform a priority in the upcoming budget. October is a wonderful time to build on our momentum. It's a month filled with learning, growth, and opportunity to come together as one united Spartan community. Whether in our classrooms, our athletic fields, or through community events, it's clear that when we work together, with a shared purpose and pride, we achieve great things. Let's continue to support one another, celebrate our successes, and make the month another great chapter in what is shaping up to be a fantastic school year. Thank you for your continued teamwork, dedication, and commitment to our students' success. Together, we are stronger. Together, we are Wyoming Valley West. Together, we are and will continue to be a destination district. Thank you, and as always, go Spartans.
Thank you, Dr. Supan. Statement for interested citizens. Did everybody have a chance that would like to speak to sign in? Just a reminder that we have a three-minute policy. Amy Caro is forty-four.
Yes, Amy Caro is a forty-four, and I just wanted to expand on what Dr. Supan said. I had the opportunity to be at the middle school for the Junior Achievement Yes Day, which was on Thursday, September twenty-fifth, and it was a huge success, and it was a vast improvement from years past with, and I don't know if it had to do with what we had great support from Mr. Needle and Mr. Gigeris and Dr. Supan, but the cellphone policy, it was so noticeable, and teachers were saying so. Just, I commend everyone that had a part in that. It really is making a difference. I couldn't believe how awesome the whole day went. The students were engaged, teachers were saying it was great. So I really think the middle school's off to a great start and the whole district, so I just want to say thank you.
Thanks, Amy. Thank you very much. And thanks to everyone involved, to Ms. Caro's point. I think the cellphone policy has made a huge impact on our students' education, plus our zero tolerance on our cyber, with the fighting with our cyber. How many fights have we had so far, roughly?
I don't have an exact number. Our middle school and our high school, I met with the Kingston Police Department yesterday. I know we have schools outside of Kingston PD, but I met with KPD yesterday. We're definitely off to a good start, and it's definitely decreased. We've had probably more altercations in elementary school than we had at the middle school and high school, but we're on the right track and will continue to fix what we got to fix.
It's just great to hear. Thank you very much. Dwayne McDavid.
Good evening, everyone. I'm Dwayne McDavid, Larchville PA. Some of you may know me, some of you may not. I'm actually a little upset with the turnout tonight. I thought you guys would have a crowd. Not that I'm looking for a crowd, but my question to you is, the whole board, is what is happening with Vice Principal Joe Jarski?
Mr. McDavid, I'm going to pause your three minutes.
Go ahead, go ahead.
I just want to let you know, we expected a larger crowd as well. The board, as you may know, would ultimately be the fact finder and decision maker with regard to personnel matters. So I've advised the board to have no comment publicly with regard to Mr. Jarski's situation, so as not to have any even thought that they had prejudged the issue before they heard all the evidence at a hearing. So the board will not have comment about that situation. I can tell you that the investigation is ongoing by the Pennsylvania State Police. We do not have a determination from them with regard to that investigation. We do check in with them regularly, and we do know it's continuing. This is a matter that was raised by Mr. Jarski with regard to the criminal complaint that was filed. It's not one that was filed by the school district. Mr. Jarski continues to be employed, working from home primarily because he had received quite a few threatening correspondence and emails and phone calls. For his safety, he's working from home at this point. And I'll let you have your time back. I just wanted to make sure.
No problem. That's good. Thank you. That explains a lot, actually. I'm glad he's working from home and not at the school because he would put everyone in danger, not just himself. You know how society is today. We'd hate to see another tragedy in a school because of one person. I'm sure you all know what he wrote, what he supposedly wrote on his Facebook, right? The social media. Does everybody know what he wrote about Charlie Kirk? Everybody read it? Did everybody receive my email? That's what it... Everybody received the email?
Yes.
If you don't mind, do all you people know what this vice principal supposedly wrote on his social media about assassination? Okay, I won't. I'm going to read it anyhow. This is from, supposedly from Joe Jarski, Vice Principal Wyoming Valley West. "I cannot believe these far-right lunatics are making this homophobic, racist, misogynist, maggot and made all capital letters except for A T, mag, it. Charlie Kirk out to be a literal martyr. Kirk called for the death penalty to be carried out by public television execution. He was executed exactly the way he wanted." That's from a Wyoming Valley West Vice Principal. Think about children reading that, kids, teenagers, younger kids, thinking it's okay to kill somebody regardless of who it is. That's just something to think about. I'm glad he's not in the school for everyone's safety, including his own. I have nothing against him, but what he wrote was wrong. Personally, I'm not an expert. I do know that his Facebook account was not hacked. He removed the remark. Once your Facebook account is hacked, you can't remove it. It can only be removed by the hacker. They clone your account. You can't do anything on that account once they clone it. It's up to the person who wrote it. Not this Joe Jarski, the person who cloned the account. It's funny how only one message was a hack on his account. One. As far as the state police go, I'm in law enforcement twenty-seven years. It takes five minutes to check an IP address, not four weeks. I would ask the state police, if you could, to get on this for the safety of our children and the taxpayers of Wyoming Valley West School District. That's it. Thank you.
Thanks. You had five seconds to go, Mr. McDavid. Awesome. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment. I have a motion to approve the minutes from our September tenth meeting, two thousand twenty-five.
Motion.
Second.
Motion and a second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed? Carries. Committee reports. Mr. DeBaskis, please.
Just an update for athletic, two things. Number one, you'll see on the agenda that we are, the Spartan softball team has asked us to approve a alternative logo. It's kind of a more modernized, everybody should have saw what it looks like. Sort of a more modernized helmet for a Spartan with an actual ponytail. So I think that's, you know, it's just an alternative logo they're going to want to put on hats and shirts. So I didn't, that's for approval. And then also, we will be hiring a recommendation for Coach Bell for our basketball program. We did some interviews a couple of weeks ago, and he has some great experience, and I think he'll be a great leader for our team moving forward. So that's all I got.
Thank you, Mr. DeBaskis, very much. Mr. McGinley, do you have anything this evening you'd like to update?
Yes, I do, if I may. A couple items. Number one, under the leadership of Mr. Novraki, the district is starting to review, to replace our reading series, K to five, and this is probably one of the most important reviews that you conduct in an elementary situation. Because obviously, reading is the backbone of education. Also, the STEM lab is now working to get up and running. Mr. Supan, Dr. Supan was involved with that, and Mr. Monteschi, and it's great to see that facility in use. And then there's been some teacher training for the K to two people for the preparation for this state testing. And again, that's something that's very positive. And you can see that the department chairman are the ones who are pretty much leading those efforts, so we thank him.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley. Mr. Hardwick, do you have anything for special education?
Not at this time, Mr. Chairman. Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Hardwick. Mr. Dikton in the gallery?
Here.
Yes. Mr. Dikton, do you have anything for us this evening? Thank you. Under buildings and grounds, I mean, we're working on a lot. Tomorrow afternoon, we have a meeting tomorrow at two thirty on Central Office, and we have quite a few things going on. I mean, just a quick update, our high school elevator parts are in, that project is going to start over the holiday weekend, this weekend. Should be completed mid to early next week.
Yep, ten-ten.
So finally, after two years of that project, it's finally going to be completed. But we're working on Dana Streets roof. We have the roof at the rectory and the wellness center and some drainage projects that we're working on. So next month, I'll be able to update everybody a little bit more. General recommended action items. Are there any questions on items one through? Eight. Any questions on one through eight?
Motion.
I have a motion by Mr. McGinley.
Second.
Second by Mr. DeBaskis. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassat?
Yes.
Mr. Camus?
Yes.
Staff recommended action items, items one through seventeen. Does there anybody have a question?
I have a question.
Yes, sir.
And it's probably for the the committee, maybe they could answer. I see there's eighteen, can you hear me? There's eighteen new hires. They're all retroactive, I believe. Did anybody, you know, make sure that nobody's working with a family member, so it's not a problem in the same department?
I looked at it.
Is that clear? Are we good with all that? Are there any concerns?
To the best of my knowledge, no, to answer your question.
Well, I make sure, I'm not sure if we have a policy on that or not.
We don't.
Okay. So it was checked. Thank you.
Well, it was checked by me. I don't know our admin team had checked that.
Can I talk real quick?
Sure.
Ms. Hogan, any issues, anything arise with Director Kabuski's questions? No.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Motion to accept the actions as presented.
Second.
I have a motion by Mr. McGinley and a second by Mr. Wilson. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassat?
Yes.
Mr. Camus?
Yes.
Finance recommended action items. I have a motion to approve the following as presented, bills for payment, the finance managers' report, and the treasurer's report.
Second.
I have a motion by Mrs. Cassat and a second by Mr. Wilson on the question. Roll call, please.
Mr. Wilson?
Yes.
Mr. DeBaskis?
Yes.
Mr. Hardwick?
Yes.
Mr. McGinley?
Yes.
Mr. Profetto?
Yes.
Mr. Kabuski?
Yes.
Mrs. Cassat?
Yes.
Mr. Camus?
Yes.
Under new business, does anybody have anything?
I would like to make the comment, if I may.
Yes, sir.
I was able to go down to the high school the day they had some junior achievement in the auditorium, and they really did a very nice job. The faculty and staff were excellent. The building looked very good. Middle school was able to come to look at the spaces where the library used to be, and they really have done a very great job there also. And again, I think it's because of the people that we have working and supporting us. And then my final is the night of the elementary open house, parents was able to walk the state street, and it was great to see the number of people who were there, the interactions between the parents and the teachers. And again, the building looked really excellent. So very positive. Three different occasions there over the past several weeks.
Thank you, Mr. McGinley, very, very much. Anyone else? Mr. McGinley, as the chairman of the policy committee, I do have a question for you.
Go ahead.
And to Dr. Supan as well. Going through our policy, to Mr. McDavid's point, we don't really have a solid social media policy.
I think you are correct about that, but I think it's time for us to get to work on that.
If, Dr. Supan, would you, could you have your staff assist Mr. McGinley in trying to look up something? Or look at the team to try to kind of bring us up into the times since the...
Yeah, I'd be shocked if PSBA doesn't have one, so like, we'll certainly look into it, yeah. Go ahead, Meyer, sorry.
We do have a social media use policy that we adopted last year.
Through PSBA? Yeah.
I think in light of...
It's not really clear at all.
Yeah, in light of what's being proposed here, I think we have to go back and review that, make sure it covers what we need to cover.
Yes, sir. Well, let Director McGinley finish.
I just said I think we have to go back and review it because obviously, we have a situation, we got to make sure that we have the type of policy that addresses that.
I agree. Anyone else? Mr. McDavid, you like to speak? So I, I, I don't, I don't know if I could actually answer that.
Yeah, but, Mr. McDavid, again, I don't want the board to have any, any member of the public that... Sure. Yeah, what, what we're talking about is basically that the school code provides certain requirements that every educator must meet, and if they don't, they can be disciplined for failing to do that. So that the school code does provide us with the basis for which we can, we can discipline employees if it's appropriate. So that's, that's really what we'd be looking at because we have to be able to justify it under the school code. Do we, yeah.
We do. We do. It's in our policies. Yes, sir.
If I remember correctly, it won't be there was the last time we spoke.
I... Yeah, and I told you, Mr. McDavid, I wasn't certain, but that I bet, I bet your cup of coffee that it wasn't. So if it's there, I owe you, yeah, if it's there, I owe your cup of coffee. I'm still not sure exactly what you're saying is there, but we'll, we'll check, and if I lost, I'm glad to pay up. Okay.
Anyone else? Our next scheduled meeting for our work session will be Wednesday, November fifth at seven PM here. Our regular November meeting will be the following Wednesday, November twelfth at seven PM. Dr. Supan has, what's the name of the solar company? Dr. Supan has, what's the name of the solar company?
Next week is Daktronics, not Solar, yeah.
So pretty exciting. We have a little presentation for next month. Motion to adjourn.
Motion.
Second.